October 7th, it is now 6:00 PM and we will begin with the pledge.
Pledge to allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started, I've got a few announcements. This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the selectmen's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. To see a complete list of the openings, please visit our website at KingstonMA.gov. And also check our website for additional events or notices. Also very important, our Fall Town Meeting is scheduled to take place Tuesday, October 28th. What time is it? 7:00 PM, thank you. And that is going to be at the Kingston Intermediate School. So please make plans to be there. We've got lots of important stuff to consider.
Can we also mention that the TA Screening Working Group is accepting applications for town administrator candidates through October 10th, so anyone interested in being Kingston's next town administrator, please apply.
Perfect, thank you. At this point, open forum, is there anybody that wanted, Will, go ahead.
I am George.
Yeah, I will.
I'm George, I'll wait there just a second.
Okay.
For open forum, real quick, Mike Svera, Lieutenant for the Police Department. Something that you're gonna see pushed through our social media as well, so watch out for it. But KPD's gonna be doing their first annual Haunted House, so that should be fun. So it's gonna be coming up on the 24th from 1:00 to 3:00 at the police station. Watch out for some postings on our social media relative to it, but we're trying to make it a big deal. It should be fun, we want a ton of people there. If you go to National Night Out and you like that, come to the Haunted House. Thank you.
Awesome, that sounds like a lot of fun. I also, I think we introduced him in the last meeting, but we do have George Samia. Can I pronounce that right?
Yes, yeah, it's not that exact.
Okay.
Samia.
Yeah.
I just remembered I wanted you to say one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Welcome.
I'll finish that.
Hello, my name is Will Clifford Cushman, I just want to, 273 Main Street, Kingston, Mass. I just wanted to say welcome, Mr. Samia, and nice to have you aboard for the Town of Kingston.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, so just to finish, I think we mentioned it this last meeting, but Keith Hickey went to Fairhaven and we grabbed their interim town administrator from Fairhaven and brought him over here.
Yeah, we have a standing joke where I was saying, "I'm gonna take my seat because I've already got my, my print on it," and he was gonna take his chair and bring it over to Fairhaven, yeah.
Well, it didn't that works, so we're very excited to have George here. You've got a lot of municipal experience and I'm super excited to have you here during our transition. And thank you so much, yeah, we appreciate it. Any other announcements from the board? All right, so what we'll do, our first item is a joint meeting with the Kingston School Committee to interview candidates for one of our open committee seats on the school committee. That's one of many open seats. So do you guys want to call your meeting to order?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to take a little call for it, Jesse Keith. Sheila Vaughn.
Here.
Sammy Coleman.
Here.
And I am here.
Okay, so what we're gonna do, we have three candidates. So do you guys have any opinion on who we pull up first or how we do this? We could have them one at a time come up, introduce themselves, and then we could ask them questions.
I think that sounds good.
Okay, and what I could do is just do, go in the list that they're, or the order that they're listed here. First one is Will Cushman, if you want to go up and just make a statement and then we can ask some questions.
Hello, my name is Will Clifford Cushman. Do I have to say my address again?
What's that?
Do I have to say my address again?
No, you're fine.
Okay. Hello, my name is Will Cushman and I'm super proud to be a part of this community and to be in general, happy to be standing here in front of you today. And I want to say thank you for your guys' consideration. So do you guys have any questions tonight for me?
Do you want us to start?
Sure, go ahead.
Does anybody have a question they would like to ask?
Can we wait until the candidates have all introduced themselves to ask questions? Just because they have some kind of general questions, I think, that I'd like to kind of get like a broad.
So just have them one at a time? Yep, okay.
Is that okay, with the candidates?
That works fine.
Yeah, and then if, maybe after the third candidate, they can all stand up there and we can kind of ask?
Okay, so Will, if you want to sit back down, I'm gonna ask Bryce Nelson. Just introduce yourself and your address and any opening statement you've got.
Hi, Bryce Nelson, 126 Country Club Way. My wife is pretty involved when it comes to school stuff and community stuff, I'm not. But she said that the schools need some help. I've got leadership experience, a bunch of kids that go here, and so I'm happy to help out where I'm needed.
Great, all right, thank you. And then Tim Fitzgibbons withdrew. We have Jennifer Crouchen. Crouchen, okay.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Crouchen, I'm a 10-year resident of Kingston, I live at 45 Boghue Road. I have three children, home, school system, fourth grade, second grade, and a soon-to-be three-year-old who eagerly waiting for her to join the preschool program. I have 18 years' experience as a federal lobbyist, so I work a lot, mostly focused on Washington, but clearly what's ever happening down there is affecting people on a local level. So I have worked with clients mostly in transportation, I've worked with some municipalities, mostly nonprofits, and I have worked in the education space. So obviously federally, the budget's really inflected, it's shut down right now. And there's implications for Massachusetts. I think certainly there's other levers that Massachusetts can pull that other states can't, but I just think I bring a different perspective, obviously, like the others, you know, an active resident in the town and try to volunteer in the kids' schools and being involved as possible and have started paying more and more attention about the challenges certainly the school committee is facing and the likelihood of the budget challenges going forward. So look forward to taking your questions.
All right, so should we have all three stand up there and then you have some general questions? Yeah, that's fine. All right, so everyone can go up and then if you guys want to start off with a question?
I'm happy to start, whatever you guys want to do.
Okay.
You can ask if you have one.
Sure, I don't know if I'm on, but I'm very loud, so it don't really matter. So this position is really only, you know, about six months. And then, you know, obviously we would go into hopefully maybe a three-year seat, kind of double-dipped. Are you going, are you thinking about if it works that would you run for the three-year seat? And then, jumping in with both feet, do you feel like you're prepared to jump in because we're going right into budget season and knowing enough about the school system and how it runs? We obviously would help you with that. But to have that experience maybe with budgets and how the loose work with the town? Yeah, sure, go first.
I, I'm gonna just turn this so I can face you guys better. I, my, I think, can you repeat the question, sorry?
Absolutely. Would you run for the three-year seat? And because this is about a six-month seat, are you, do you believe you're prepared to understand, you know, the budgets and do you have background in like understanding the budgets of the town?
From every town meeting that I have attended in my life, I feel that I want to hopefully run in the near future for this position and I want to help the Town of Kingston and the school committee recover from this budget situation in the next couple of years. So this is what my main goal is, to help you guys possibly make a, like a list of things that we have to do and what we have to overcome. And what we can do to help get ourselves out of this basically law. So I just wanted to say that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, same question, I guess, so I'd be more than like willing to look into the, you know, three-year commitment, that doesn't scare me off or anything like that. Assuming that I take to the position somewhat well and I can be effective. As far as being familiar with budgets, that type of thing, like sure, that's something I'm pretty well-versed in. Even though when it comes to the town specifics, the school specifics, that kind of stuff, I'd need, you know, quite a bit of help in to begin with. But no, regarding budgets and that kind of stuff, that's something I'm fairly familiar with.
Awesome, thank you.
I think what's really interesting about this position is that it's vacant, so you kind of get to test-run it a little bit and really understand the pitfalls and the challenges and the opportunities. So for me, I see it as a great opportunity to lead up to then a larger, you know, three-year term. So that's what interests me the most. As far as the budget, you know, obviously you guys are experts and you've been fully involved in this. I certainly was actively watching remotely last year, so I saw a lot of the conversations. I do think that I could come in and quickly kind of pick up on the learning curve here, where things are and jump in, but certainly, you know, would have to really, you know, get caught up to where things are because it is a quick turnaround.
Awesome, thank you.
Hey, how's everything?
If you would like to, sure.
As some people might have looked at, a couple of my letters of recommendation, I have helped the class of 2025 fundraise for all their goals and met and overseed their goals for the 20, for our, for the past four years. And I feel that I can help do the same thing, plan the events, plan other things for this school committee and school community at a greater rate that I feel that that will help the school committee fundraise and get more money for us to be able to use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys can keep going if you want, sure.
I'm wondering, I guess, your primary motivator for running for an appointed seat? And also if the idea of an override, how you would approach that? And how you feel like that would need to be brought to the residents of Kingston? If that is something that we determine has to be done?
And can I just add before the answer?
Yep.
Just in case they don't understand or the people at home watching don't understand. An override is where we don't have enough taxable levy, I know you guys know this, but we know it too well. I just want to make sure you guys understand, so an override is where we would need to go back to the taxpayers and ask them, have them vote at town meeting and then in a special election to agree to an increase in taxes to cover the revenue constraints for a higher, a much higher budget. We were able to do last year's, or this current fiscal year, without an override. Next year is just looking kind of murky, like we may need to propose an override. Either that or cut budgets tremendously, which is, it's bad being stuck between a rock and a hard place. So just wanted to add that, but anybody who wants to answer?
Eric, I was kind of hoping the candidates would have provided that information so that I could have seen more of it, you know?
Oops.
Were you a part of school?
I did not bring that up. All right.
Sure, take it, thanks.
I appreciate him explaining that because I didn't know what that meant. But my primary motivator, I mean, I have four kids in the school district, that's most important to me. I just want to be sure they're going to a good school and the school that, you know, all of our friends and that kind of stuff go to, that they have the resources, they have the support. And so throwing my hat into the ring and grant, I guess, adding some of my expertise and my viewpoint, I guess that's why I'm here. But when it comes to, you know, making decisions and that kind of stuff, whether it's increasing taxes or making difficult cuts and that kind of thing, that kind of stuff I'm fairly comfortable with. It's just a matter of kind of weighing decisions and sometimes you have to make tough decisions and sometimes you have to roll that out to the taxpayers or you have to do without. And it's just a matter of kind of understanding what is on the table and not being too emotional about it, but just kind of making the decision that makes the best sense for the town and for the kids, so.
Can I just ask for a quick repeat of the question if possible?
Yes, I'm just wondering your primary motivation for running for the appointed seat? And then how you would approach the town if we were to be in a position of needing an override?
I, my motivation is I want to make this school a better place for everyone to attend. And I, in forty past twelve years of being in the, within the district, I feel, and within, for my last 18 years of being in the town, I feel that if I go to help you guys in the budget situation, after getting right out of high school and seeing and being right out of business money management class, I feel that I have enough understanding of the budget situation in the town and I attended every vote of selectmen meeting that I can remember. And I feel that I have enough understanding of the budget situation in the past couple of months. And I feel that everything that we do here is crucial to make a success. And but if we are hit with an override and we have to lay off people, I feel that we have to cut certain things and we have to try to lenient a couple of things. I know a couple of towns currently have overrides which they couldn't have avoided. but at this time, I feel that we might need to cut some stuff that, that is, if we do hit an override, we have to cut stuff that is nonessential, but will keep the school in a perfect operating period of time. Thank you.
So my primary motivator is my children and certainly that I'm here in Kingston and I want to see the best for Kingston. I think if you look at the post-pandemic years, in the last two or three, if you're not paying attention, there's been a lot of overrides and a lot of fiscal challenges in many of our neighboring municipalities. And it's a real challenge. So the fact that you avoided an override last year is really just a miracle. And I think that just sets it up for the inevitable, really tough conversations of what needs to be done to address this year's budget and how, you know, how much is that override going to be? And then what is the long-term plan to ensure that you don't have to always go back to the override? What is the plan? And, you know, a lot of towns have not, you know, successfully done it the first time. We saw what happened in Hanover and other places and they had to do huge layoffs and you really had to feel the hurt for them to come back and do the override. So to avoid a situation like that would be, I think, key. I think our greatest asset is our schools and our, our education system and certainly anything we can do to continue to support the teachers and the administrators who do God's work, and that would be my motivator.
I have several, but I, I'm happy to defer to the Board of Selectmen.
Does anybody have a question?
You're on school committee. You have any questions from your experience? Kyle's on school committee, right?
So how would you handle disagreements or criticisms from the public? From, it could be parents or it could be taxpayers. It could be anybody who doesn't agree with what you're doing.
Wrong answer.
Go ahead, Will.
And, and just so I understand, what you mean by that question is what do we do if people disagree with us and disapprove of what we are doing? Is I will, I will inform them of what is at stake and, and if we do not have, and, and if we have some things, if we are in a void and have to be cut, I will say, hey, maybe, maybe in a couple of years, maybe i-if we do get a nice level of funding that we do have again, we, we are able to bring back the, the things that we all know and love. And, and if people disapprove with people getting rid of the things that we love in our school, and then I will say, and this is, and basically a override, we could jump back better than ever than before the override. Because if you think about it, the override could be a restart for us in our town and just not a big, like, hey, we need to cut people. We do not have to think like that. We can say, hey, maybe we can just jump back better than ever after the override. Thank you.
To be honest, I, I don't know. I don't have a lot of experience as far as the process goes or what my involvement would be, like, with the people in the town and, like, how that would present itself. I'm not, like, shying away or, like, nervous about the public view and that kind of stuff. Like, it would just really be a matter of, hey, let's debate what's, like, our resources are, what the needs are of the town, of the kids, of the schools, and then just making the best decisions we can. And you're not going to please everybody, obviously, especially when it comes to, like, raising taxes or things, you know, going without in the schools. So it's always going to be a little bit of that perception, I'm sure. But it's just a matter of just dealing with what you've got, making decisions and moving forward with them.
I think that in disagreement, I really have to kind of reframe it with where are they coming from? And I think they're truly coming from a place of they're frustrated, they're feeling, you know, pinched, you know, their own budgets at their house are really hurting and you're talking about increasing taxes while fees are going up for stuff and clothing costs and food and everything. And so it just feels compounded and there's no relief. And so they're looking for someone to blame. And so I think you have to kind of come with that mind frame of it. But at the same time, I think communication is key, clear messages is key. In this environment of social media, sometimes a lot of things can get lost in translation. And so to have that clarifying point, I think, would be really important and to really drill down to what we're talking about here, which is our budget. And I do think that if we could have a view of it where this year we'd looked at seriously for a larger, long-term plan to show that we're making that effort to not keep coming back to the well like this, that would really, you know, be something that they could hopefully grasp around. But you'd almost need a little kind of PR campaign to kind of debunk the myths and address kind of the concerns head-on before that they start to spread misinformation.
Thank you.
Can I add something, Jeff?
Uh, sure, Will.
And as well as that, I have, I have seen a lot of disapproval and disagreement in, in my life with basically my disabilities. And I say, hey, we can keep that to lower us down maybe, and then, and then it will help us improve, basically. Then, just like I was saying before, is, non, not improving means maybe improving in the future. Maybe one day, and I was hoping maybe in the future, if, if people do disagree with us, we could maybe hold a big community hall activity, just like town hall and town meeting. Maybe we can have a open forum, but in public hearing, like you guys sometimes do, to hear, hey, what does the community think about this? And say, hey, maybe we can decide to do something better. And then if we hit a community out before voting on stuff. Thank you.
Anybody else? Back to you guys.
Carl.
Oh, Carl, did you have one? Sorry.
I have one general question here. I'm sure you all know that the education budget in Kingston is approximately half of the total budget for the town, which is the case in most communities in Massachusetts. How do you feel about unlimited budgets for the schools? Would there be a point where you would say, wait a minute? If we're going to go forward with a twenty percent increase, the rest of the town just can't afford that? Or do you feel that no matter what the budget's going to be, we have to have the finest schools and we just throw money after the issues? I'd like you to comment on your general feelings, your attitude towards balancing the need for great education with the need for reasonable budgets for the schools. Go ahead, Will.
I feel that these, so just so I can get this right, you, you want to hear our opinions on the school districts getting equal funding and, and the funding that, that the rest of the town compared to the rest of town?
How it fits in with the total town?
Okay. In, in my opinion, if we get a certain amount of funding, for instance, I don't know how much you guys got last year, but if we get this certain amount of funding, we might, some really price increases, I feel that, that hopefully we can get more increasing, but, but keep the town at a level budget type of thing. So for instance, keep, try to keep everything, like, like, spread out, the increasing budget. For instance, if we have twenty percent that we got an increase, I hope, like, like, couple pers, like, twenty percent, I hope some of that amount goes through every department. Because for instance, if we say, hey, we need more money in police department, for instance, I have a master, town, town streets, parks and trees in the future. I hope, I hope each department gets a piece of the increased budget. And I hope we can depend on, like, if we didn't have, we can depend on, like, the amount of, like, I, I want every department to get a piece of that, because if we think about it, without our street parks and trees, without our police, without our fire department, without any of our departments such as facilities, you guys and other people in our town and other departments, our, our town and our schools will not be able to function at the same level that they currently at. And this is the major thing with our, and, and I feel that equal spread out, if we spread out the percentage of the raising is of each department, I feel that each department will get better and, but, and, and our schools will benefit and the rest of the departments will equally benefit from that as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Short answer, no. I'm not a fan of just throwing money at problems. And I'm not sure exactly how it works, you know, regarding the school systems and how, you know, all of that's allocated. In my own life, in business, like, nine times out of ten, creativity to problem-solving is way easier, like, more effective than just blowing up a budget and throwing money at stuff. So I would certainly be interested to see where money's going, how it's being allocated. Are there more creative solutions or things that would actually move the needle as opposed to just throwing more money at this thing, because it seems like it would solve things? So diving into some of that stuff and really looking to see where the money's going, how it's being allocated and, like, what effect that's having, that's where my mind just naturally is drawn to. But that being said, sometimes there is more money that needs to be allocated to places. So it's just a matter of trying to figure things out and going from there.
Thank you.
I think it's a really important question. Certainly, it's half the budget, but you can't have a great school system without a well-funded services and a town administrators. You need to be able to have those resources and departments here for your residents. Certainly, with, everyone would love to throw money at all these needs, but you have to really be realistic. I think the key will be to not just look at this year, but really to look far ahead, to show that we're being thoughtful in planning and understanding the cost. The cost of health insurance alone are crippling municipalities. That is a huge problem to overcome. And, you know, I don't know what more the state can do. Certainly, there's money coming from Chapter Seventy and other funds, but you're limited to where you get your funds. So where else can you get creative to increase your resources as well as get creative on the side of cutting budgets? So no, we won't take all the money and throw it at the school committee. That wouldn't be my plan. But it certainly is something that we need to make the investments in, in equal to weighing the cost of the other additional services.
Thank you.
Jennifer, I know you had mentioned you're a federal lobbyist, I believe. Can you explain, and I apologize, gentlemen, that this question's, I guess, more, I'm curious how that would come into play if there's any kind of conflict to be on a seated committee as an elected official, if you're, with your, can you explain how your professional background could help? Or perhaps, are you, would there be any conflict of interest and how would you explain that? Like, when we're going through the budget process?
Sure. And I have reviewed my clients and I find no conflict of interest for the clients that I'm registered for. And for that matter, for the clients at my firm. Certainly, I work in behalf of a nonprofit association that supports IDA funding, so full funding. Sounds like a pipe dream, but it's really important. And certainly, those efforts, I think, would not hinder, but benefit the services of Kingston and other, other towns. And so, you know, federally, right now, you really have to work across the aisle and you have to find ways of having common conversations and interest and to get to solutions. And so we have a lot of, you know, challenges we have to overcome and to meet people where they're at. And so I think that that skill set of understanding how government can work or not work is important to this role. But I don't see a conflict, but if there was one ever presented, you know, we certainly would address that.
Thank you. And then not to leave you guys out, can I actually ask you, gentlemen, how you would bring your professional experience and, Will, any experience that you have to, to this position?
Uh, can you just repeat that?
How would you bring any of your past experiences to this position?
My past experiences have, in the school district, I, I see that, so Kingston Intermediate School, Kingston Elementary School is basically, just so I can get this right, sorry. So you were wondering about my past experiences in our school district. In, in the past, I have been in a lot of clubs such as student council and, and a lot of positions such as drama and such as art, such as, and, and I was also the inclusivity coordinator of the Student Council Self-Feast of Massachusetts Association of Student Councils program as appointed to that position as, to help make sure that our school district and the rest of the, in our, in our programs, in our student council is a lot of one unified and trying to make it more unified for everyone. And also, I, I also have been a good leader in, in a lot of positions in the school and in the community in the past. I have, and, and I'm going to list a couple of my positions which I tried running for in student council, but in the, then I felt like it was a good fit for me, which was, I used to run for, I tried running for vice president a couple of years ago for student council. And, but the, the reason behind that is, I feel that in, inside of the student council, I feel, hey, maybe this can be improved. And I, I had so much experience from my class and from, with this town and with my history within this town. I had over, I don't know how, how many years history, my great-grandfather were and he was a part of this town, as town clerk for over fifty years. And, and he held a school committee position, actually, to be exact. So I'm, and my great-grandpa, my grandpa Paul Zachariau Kishman, he ran for, he was a Kingston police officer and military personnel in during Vietnam War. So I, my history and my, and, and leadership skills, basically, I, I'd look at everything from other people's shoes. For instance, if people say, hey, I don't feel this is a good idea. And I say, okay, what can we do to improve it, to myself? And, and for instance, I take the perspective of the community. And I don't feel that every community member, and I feel that every community member has a voice in this community, in this school committee, yes. Because for instance, if we think about it, the school committee, everyone in a few, gone through our school districts. And, and, and hopefully, everyone will continue using our school districts. As our school district and our elementary school and intermediate school grow, hopefully, in the future. I hope to make this a more, better and inclusive place. And a, and I hope to improve the leadership skills and, and hope to improve the community outreach in our school district as, as I'm doing with, every day I'm, I'm improving the community outreach with, in, in my, in the community of our disabilities. I do my best to do my disability advocacy wherever I go. And I feel that everyone will benefit from my leadership skills, from all my programs. And I was also a part of best buddies in our school. And I feel like everything will come back to, hey, look at this. What can we do better from this? And say, and then, then I, I'm open to having a good conversation with the community. And I feel that if we do that, we will improve our community outreach and our community altogether. And I, I, and I feel that we can improve our schools, because our teachers, from our teachers to our principals, to our assistant principals, to our students, and to the parents of the schools, of our schools and the community, is, I feel that they all matter. And if we take their opinion on stuff and say, and then in, and put it into our own voice and say, hey, what can we do to improve this? And, and hear our their opinions, we will have make a better school in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
As far as my professional experience, you know, I've run a successful business in sales for twenty years. I do a lot of hiring, firing, training. So it's, you know, that's a lot different than the ones that support me and my business. a lot different than the ones that support me and my business as far as, you know, the finances and the marketing and all that kind of stuff. I'd say probably my biggest strength to a committee like this is also my biggest weakness. I'm never, I've never been in a building like this before. I don't know how any of this stuff works. I don't know all the procedures, all that kind of stuff. There are a lot of people in this room that have made a career out of understanding how this part of the town functions. That's kind of a weakness for me, but it's also kind of a strength at the same time where I think your average town person, their kids go to school, they want the best for their kids, they don't know all the backend stuff and all the budgetary stuff aside from our schools are packed or, you know, small things like that. So being, being, I guess, bringing a fresh set of eyes to the situation a little bit with a pretty level-headed business mind is really what I would expect to bring to a position like that, whether or not that's valuable or needed. You guys know better than I would, so.
Any other questions?
My question was just conflict of interest. Jeannie got it.
I think we're good.
I think that's all of our questions.
Okay. All right, you guys can, can have a seat.
Can I make one closing statement?
Yeah, you, you all can make a closing statement.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say thank you for the board of selectmen and everyone in this room tonight for hearing out everyone here and saying, even though all of us want the position, but maybe we can benefit off the information we have received tonight. And maybe in, in general, we can make this school a better place, one piece at a time. And I would thank everyone who volunteered tonight for this position.
Thank you too very much.
Thank you.
And if you all want to make a closing statement?
I guess just briefly, obviously, I think we have some, you know, very active residents that all would be a wonderful opportunity. And again, I just come as a, as a mom and a resident and, you know, eager to be supportive if, if needed. I think part of being a resident, you should be civically engaged as much as possible. And my season of life hasn't always allowed it, but I think that this is really important and for the long-term vitality of the schools and the town. So welcome the opportunity.
Thank you.
Same. Happy to help if I can, whether it's, you know, officially being, I don't know, in the room with this kind of stuff or, you know, just as a person that lives in the town. So I'm happy to help in whatever way I can.
Thank you all. And, and I just want to add, we're only going to be picking one person tonight, but thank you all so much for, for volunteering and, and putting your thoughts together and coming here tonight to speak. If you aren't selected or even if you are selected, we have other boards and committees that are missing people. Some are appointed boards, some are elected boards, you know, and our elections are in the spring. But the openings on elected boards obviously still need to be filled through this appointing process. So don't be intimidated. We have finance committee, there's capital wage-
Capital planning committee, community preservation committee, affordable housing trust. We've got quite a, quite a few openings that, and some of them have more time commitment than others. So for anyone watching too, if you want to reach out to us and tell us how much availability you have and what kind of topics you're interested in, we can find something for you.
And you don't have to be an expert at, at any of this. I mean, I don't think any of you all were, were teachers. I mean, you've been through the schools or you have kids in the schools and that's kind of where we all came from, you know, wanting to, to help out. Some people have had experience.
I had no kids when I started.
Right.
That's rare, though.
Right.
18 years later, yeah. Kids. I'm also on two of those other committees. That's kind of hilarious. So you can be a lot more.
I know. I looked at you when I said it.
No, I'm like, I'm not. Yeah.
All right, you all can, can have a seat. So, yeah, so I think, do you guys have anything to say? You guys want to make a motion or?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Before we make a motion, I would just like to say to all three of you, thank you for your willingness to step up to this position.
Four, really?
Yes, four. Yes, I apologize. Yes. That is much appreciated because we know that this is not the easiest job, especially in this tumultuous season that we are heading into. It is much appreciated. And one thing that was clear is all of your dedication to the town, the commitment that you are willing to show, and the civic engagement that this brings. You know, it's actually nice to see three new faces, truthfully, because I do think we see a lot of overlap. So we need more involvement, you know, in our town.
I'm trying to see, me too.
Regardless of who is appointed tonight, I hope that all of you will continue to be involved with the school committee. All of our meetings are public. We have a public speaking opportunity each month. And we are always looking for support and feedback from everyone in the community. So at this time, I'd like to see if anybody would like to make a motion for an appointment.
I'm happy to make a motion. I'll make a motion for Jennifer Crouchen.
Is there a second? Sorry, Sheila, can I make a friendly amendment to appoint as a member of school, Kingston School Committee effective immediately until the 2026 Spring Town Meeting? Or actually, it's Town Election.
Town Election.
This says meeting, it says.
Yeah, right. Town election.
There you go. Toshi, you got that?
She's got it.
Love it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we need to roll call vote?
Yep.
Yeah, and we're going to all do one vote.
Just one big one?
Yeah, we're just going to do one big one.
Do you want us to start?
You start.
Okay. Jesse Keith?
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn?
Yes.
Jeannie Coleman?
Yes.
I am a yes.
Kim?
You're the chair.
I'm a yes.
Kim Ember, aye.
Do you have to make a separate motion?
No.
Missy Bateman, aye.
Dawn, aye.
Colby, aye.
Okay. But I would also have voted for Bryce as well. So I liked both candidates. I liked Will. I like, I would have voted for all of you. So I, I, I would, didn't want to make a motion, to be honest with you, because I think all of you bring unique skills. So it's, it's, it's a tough decision to make.
Somebody has to make it and then you just go through it.
But, Will, we'll find more for you to do. Don't you worry.
Bryce has said that he would have voted for her too. There you go. But please.
It's tough. It's tough. It's tough to pick.
Well, there's lots, lots, lots more seats. So we need to keep, keep going and.
And thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good luck, Jennifer.
When is your next school committee meeting?
Our, that's a great question.
We will get that to you on the 20th.
The 20th?
Okay.
Yes, I think it's the 20th.
October 20th at 6 o'clock, right here. So congratulations, welcome. And I will go ahead and close.
And she needs to get sworn in at the town clerk.
Karen, we'll, we'll reach out to you about the iPad and everything.
All right.
Yes.
Do you need to close out your meeting?
Yes.
I will make a motion that we close the Kingston School Committee meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Jesse Keith?
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn?
Yes.
Jeannie Coleman?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for our selection for allowing us to come and join you this evening.
Thank you. And we're going to do about a four-minute recess. We'll be back in just a few minutes.
Yes. Thank you.
Use the men's room.
All right, folks, we're gonna get started again. See you all later. Good night. All right, we got everybody back. Are we good?
Okay, I think so.
We're good. Okay. Uh, next up, we have a request to continue winter maintenance on Lantern Lane. Um, I can't remember the gentleman's name. Is he online from Lantern Lane?
He spoke at the last meeting.
Jonathan Clark. So, I don't see him. We do have Sean Taylor, uh, Sean Turner, sorry, our interim highway superintendent. So, we had a request, just like at our last meeting, there's a request from residents of Lantern Lane. There's some information in our packet with some issues that make it difficult to maintain that road. It's kinda narrow. But we had kinda put in place and discussed at our last meeting, maybe approving it with the residents signing a release of claim for any possible damage.
There were issues on potentially both sides, though, right?
Yeah.
So, one neighbor had a granite curb, one neighbor has stones. I think there was the resident who spoke here last time spoke, I don't remember if it was part of open forum or not, but we couldn't deliberate it because it wasn't on the agenda.
Right.
But he had mentioned putting in, like, reflector posts-
Yep.
-to delineate where the edges were to help the plow drivers. And I think the question was a question of liability. If the plow hits the granite curb and damages it, or hits the rocks and damages them, would they sign a release of liability?
Right.
And I don't know the answer to that.
Um, I believe he'd said he would be willing to do that. So, I guess what we could do without him here, we could still take a vote, make a motion to do that pending them signing a release of claim for any possible damage. And just so everybody knows, our Kate, our law firm, is working on that, on that document that will release us of any liability.
So, I guess my only question, this probably goes to Sean, is, you know, I support the removal of liability, but also are any of these things, things that can actually damage our equipment? Because that's more important to me than having to pay a thousand dollars to fix a, you know, a granite curb or something like that.
Sean, if you're online, are you, can you comment on that?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Oh, yep, yep, we can hear you.
Loudly. Okay. Loudly clear? I'll try to talk louder. So, yeah, I mean, the stones that are on the left-hand side of the road-
Yep.
-if those are clearly marked and they, because they're so short, if the truck goes off the road just a slight bit and hits those stones, then yes, it could damage the plow pretty significantly. Because they're actually like large boulders that are only about three feet tall, two feet tall. If they get under a snowbank, then we can't see them when we hit them. But if they're clearly marked, then we shouldn't be that far off the road to hit them.
Yeah.
That's why I think the reflector posts are an important piece of this puzzle.
All right, so-
But yes, those, those can do damage to the plow.
So, Sean, do you have any issues with this, with us approving this pending the sign of release of claim for any possible damage and the use of the reflectors?
Well, what was the reason that those rocks couldn't be moved, based on the photo?
The rocks could be, so when I, when Keith and I met with the resident before, he said he would be more than willing to move the rocks. He had just put them there, because cars would come down his road, turn around, and they would cut the corner and drive up on his grass.
Yeah.
So, the granite curb cannot be moved, but he was more than willing to move the rocks.
Okay.
But then it just kinda snowballed from there and-
Right.
Kinda got upset, and then it was just kinda like, oh, well, we'll talk about it at a selectmen's meeting, and nothing was ever said after.
So, do we need to add to this motion that the rocks, the, I don't know how to describe these, movable rocks are moved? Should we add that in there, Sean?
I, I would honestly like to see if they could be moved. If not, I would definitely want them clearly marked, so we would not damage any plows.
I think we should clearly mark it regardless.
Yeah.
Because I think we don't want the trucks going off the road.
I mean, the first option, if he's willing to move them, great. If he's not, then they definitely clearly need to be marked.
So, why don't I suggest this? So, the residents sign a release of claim from any possible damage, and the rocks should be moved back from the roadway and, and marked? Both?
And the edges of the-
And the roadway, the edge of the yard are marked? So, we have both?
Yeah, because we've been plowing this road for quite some time, but he just added these rocks.
Yeah.
I think he told us like a year ago.
Okay.
So, I, I don't even think these were there for last winter.
Okay.
These are something new that were added, so it's just another thing we have to worry about going around.
Okay.
Is the curbing the residence, or is the curbing-
Yes.
The opposite side, though. There's two different residents that we're talking about.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay. Are we, somebody, would somebody like to make a motion?
Is there any other questions? No?
I can try to muddle through that. I move to approve the winter maintenance on Lantern Lane for the 2025-2026 winter season, pending the residents sign a release of claim from any possible damage, and the rocks are moved, and the resident clearly marks the edges of the roadway with reflective posts.
So, I have a second. Yep, all those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
All right, next item. Chief, background checks of new department heads. So, Chief Holmes is request, or is he requesting?
No.
We're requesting it.
You can bring that.
That a comprehensive background check, which involves a check of previous employment history, military background, credit check, and a scan of all available databases, not considered a query. This includes Crime Tracer and any open source Google search, the Massachusetts Department of Public Records, and any other resources that the department has. And this would be for new department heads, not, not every employee, just the new department heads. Chief?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, the Honorable Members, Mr. Samia, Ms. Tucker. Uh, this is something I spoke with Selectman Bateman about, and, you know, I think it's an additional step to vetting new employees. The background investigators are good at what they do, and it assures that we're not making a 30-year mistake for the town.
Any questions, comments?
No, I know Tina's here tonight in case we had questions, but it, the only thing that we are, I believe, are waiting for is for legal to process, so contingent upon legal processing, a proposal to us for language.
Okay.
I have a little bit of a concern that, you know, we're trying to build up the police department with additional bodies and so that we can do additional things. We've got this new dog, we've got the social, whatever it is. We, I'm still having residents call me about speeding. I'm a little bit reluctant to be adding another responsibility to the police department.
So, how many, how often are we hiring a department head? I mean, I, I know what we have going on right now, but overall, are we talking probably one a year? I mean, it probably varies.
It, I mean, it varies, right? So, some people move on in their career, they might move with their families. I think this came up because we had some recent turnover in some of the department head positions, and I think Selectman Bateman brought up a concern that some of the things that came up may have, we would have found out about some history, a little deeper history in their, in their past if we had done a deeper dive. It's not feasible to have the police department do that for every employee.
Mm-hmm.
But department heads, the hope is that it would be few and far between, because we would find the right candidate and be sure it's the right candidate, and then they would have a nice, long career with the town of Kingston.
So, Chief, let me ask, who on your staff would be responsible for doing this, and what do you think the, the level of effort is, the time required to spend on something like this?
So, it takes a series of weeks if you're doing it and you're doing it the right way. So, from the get-go, the starting point is the release authorization that we would receive a copy of, and then all the biographical data. So, a series of weeks, meaning that this is a collateral duty of a patrol officer, or an assignment to the detectives. When you, when you give a collateral duty to a patrol officer, you're widening the aperture of the things that they're exposed to, and it's done under the supervision of the detective division. So, you know, it's turnaround time could be a couple of weeks. You know, it's not to say that, you know, people in their careers don't make mistakes, but you was the appointee, I thought he would know what you're getting.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important that we're vetting our department heads, because currently, it's a query one, level one check, which is very basic, and it is just, and the chief can speak to this more, but it's basically just checking criminal background. It doesn't check anything else. And there are certainly other things that I think we should be privy to, if we're gonna hire a department head that we're gonna keep here, hopefully, for 30 years. That's the hope. So, I thought it was important that we were doing a deeper dive into that than just a regular court.
Any other thoughts, questions, comments?
Sounded like we just need to make the motion pending approval from legal counsel.
Right. Chief, anything to add before we make our motion?
Aye, I think Selectman Henbury has it right that, you know, subject to further review by counsel, you know, we're not, we don't wanna make a mistake on the town's behalf either. So, whatever we're allowed to do within, within the confines of the law. I have had a conversation with Tina from HR today, and, you know, if the rules are different and we can't use a credit check or can't use the things that we use in the police side of things, we'll abide by whatever those rules are. We just need to know what they are.
Okay. Somebody make a motion?
Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
I move that the board adopt the practice of having the Kingston Police Department conduct comprehensive background checks of all new or prospective department heads of the town of Kingston, contingent upon legal's proposal of language.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's against? It's unanimous. Don't go anywhere, Chief.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Next item is approval to appoint two new, full-time, not two new, two full-time police officers from civil service local register. Chief, do you wanna intro this?
Sure. The local register program is something that the board voted on and approved a couple of months ago. These positions are current vacancies. We've advertised for them. We work with HR to make sure that we're doing it the right way, that we're within the budget at this time, and what we would do from here is, because it's a local register, we would do the appointment on behalf of the board, but provide an introduction to the board upon tendering of a tentative offer of employment.
Any questions, comments, or a motion? Not emotion, emotion.
Understood.
No emotion.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that the board authorize the police chief to appoint on behalf of the board two full-time police officer appointments from the civil service local register, and to provide an introduction of the candidates to the board prior to the candidate's beginning employment.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Don't go anywhere. Approval to request civil service list for anticipated appointments prior to the end of the calendar year. Go ahead, Chief, if you wanna intro this as well.
So, this is the traditional civil service appointment list. In order to get that list, you know, the appointing authority is the board, and I'd need approval from you to call for a list for anticipated vacancies for retirements, one that is actually tomorrow, but effective on the 14th of October, and another anticipated retirement in December.
Okay. Any, any questions, comments, concerns?
I move that the board authorize the police chief to request a candidate certification list from the civil service in order to begin the selection and background investigation process to backfill anticipated retirements and report back to the board for conditional offers of employment.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, we have a request that the town clerk to set a special town election date for the debt exclusion and vote and ballot question wording. So, the town clerk is asking the board to request to set a special town election day for debt exclusion. There must be 35 days' notice for a special election. The clerk's office is looking at Saturday, November 15th as the date. And George, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, so if, if, if we pass the MSBA, the roof project, then it goes to an election. If it does not pass at the special town, the fall town meeting, then we would not have this election, correct?
Uh, well, yes, because, you know, they would, they would only be coming up with about half the money. I don't know the exact amount that they were gonna, sometimes it's 52 percent.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't, sometimes it's 52 percent, sometimes it's, you know, less, but you may not wanna move forward on it.
Right.
But you are authorizing the treasurer to borrow the whole amount, which is the way that they do it with MSBA money.
Right. Okay, so... Don't we have to have a date in here, or?
For the motion.
Yeah, in the motion, don't-
Yep.
No, Patricia, you're saying no?
There was a lot of confusion, and the clerk said you just have to ask, you have to ask the clerk to set the date. The board doesn't actually set the date.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, and that's, that's the way the motion's written. Okay. So, we have two different motions, or are they-
So, you have to request that the clerk set a date-
Yep.
-and then you have to request, you have to approve the ballot wording.
Okay.
So, I move the Board of Selectmen request the town clerk to set a special town election for debt exclusion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then the next one, I did not look at this earlier, at the wording on this, so I'm a little bit confused, but does it make sense?
Would the number be in there for the vote?
It came straight from Jay, just so you know.
Okay.
I was just curious, will the, the number will be listed somewhere for the people voting on this?
Yes, ultimately, I think, but you don't know what that-
Right.
Right, okay.
You know what I mean, is yet, or whatever. But as, as Patricia pointed out, this is one that we, we went right through Jay Tullman on, and so we should be in good shape at the moment.
Okay.
All right, does somebody wanna make the motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen set the ballot question for the debt exclusion as, shall the town of Kingston be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called the amounts required, to pay for the bond issued in order to fund a partial replacement for the Kingston Elementary School?
And then you have to say yes or no.
Second?
Yep. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, next item, we need to reopen the special town meeting warrant review and possibly add new warrant articles.
I move the Board of Selectmen reopen the special town meeting warrant.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have a request from Chief Holmes, if you wanna come back up.
Oh, right.
Requesting addition of an article to appropriate $32,000 to adjust a town meeting from the Waterways Improvement Fund to expend for the purpose of purchase of a new boat engine for the Harbor Masters 2014 24-foot Barker boat, or take any other action relative thereto the draft articles in our meeting packet. Chief, did you wanna add anything?
Uh, I heard from the Harbor Master on this. Mrs. Lombardi, who works with the Harbor Master, wrote the article. An engine is in need of replacement. It comes from the Waterways Fund, and any excess would be not used or returned to the Waterways Fund.
Does anybody have any questions on this? What is the, the article number on this?
I think all the numbers are gonna change anyway, right?
You're almost the last one that's bringing it in this.
So, could we just say, I move the Board of Selectmen add the article as presented this evening for $32,000 to be expended from the Waterways Improvement Fund for a replacement-
It's 12.
Boat? Oh, is it 12?
Yeah.
It's number 12, yeah.
Oh, no, yeah, but I think the numbers, aren't the numbers gonna change?
Potentially, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, well, potentially.
So, that's why I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, no, I think that was good. Was that your motion?
Second?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, Tricia.
And you said to, adding to the special town meeting warrant?
Yes.
Did you say that? Okay.
I just was trying to explain what it was as part of the motion.
Yeah, that's perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, so that's good.
Thank you.
Any other, is there anything else we need to do to this warrant? We're considering removing some things?
That's what I was gonna ask. If we close it, can we remove stuff, or do we have to remove stuff before we close it?
We need to remove things.
We can, if you choose to do it, you can remove, you can, you know, you can add,
you've opened it again.
To, to be clear, we can also leave it alone, and on the day of town meeting, you can skip, you pass over it.
Yes.
So, there were questions about, I forget where it is.
Five and six.
Thank you.
Five and six are supplementing the operating budget police, correct?
Right.
Chief, well, I don't wanna stop there.
Oh, go ahead, please.
The, the chief and I discussed this, okay, pretty, pretty extensively, and we did some research on it. The number five, I get the feeling that the chief is already where he needs to be with his authorization to be able to utilize opioid funds, grant money, and potentially his intergovernmental agreement with other towns.
Mm-hmm.
I, our final talk on this, I said I was gonna leave it on, simply because just in the event with my 18 hours of tenure here, there was something that was discussed, and I'm missing it. And, and, you know, I, I don't know, but I honestly think that right now, the chief is in good shape and does not, this article probably isn't needed, but if there's something else, you guys might know it that I don't.
And we also did run this by Tullman, and so this has gone through legal counsel. Chief, did you have something to add to this?
So, the logic Mr. Hickey had, putting this on there, was to create an appropriation source, which is net zero minus the pension contributions. Mr. Tullman says we don't need it on there, we don't need it on there.
Yeah. So, we can choose to leave it on there and skip it the day of, which is legit, or we can pull it off. But if we pull it off, we can't, it's not gonna be printed if we needed to add it back in. I mean, it sounds like we don't need it, but just to be prudent, I personally don't think it's a bad idea to leave it in there if we skip it.
And just skip over it.
Yeah. But Carl, what are your thoughts with this?
My, my thought is that I don't like having it in there.
Okay.
If, if it's not being funded by a vehicle that we need town meeting to approve-
Yeah.
-then I don't see why we should have it in there.
Okay, that's fair.
I agree.
Okay.
May I ask, but the cost, the money cost, are it being used for?
Yeah. We'll go into this after. Right now, we're just doing the, the review, and we may close it, but we're gonna be voting on the warrant after this, and that's where we'll be going through these items. But you're saying we, it sounds like Carl and Kim wanna go ahead and remove it?
Add, remove it.
Yeah, okay, I'm fine.
The cleaner and less confusing it is, the better.
So, do we wanna make a motion to remove the warrant article? And I think you need to say what it is.
I move to remove Article Five, Supplement Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Operating Budget Police, $180,000 from the warrant.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. So, we're moving five. And then six was the other one? That's the one that's, um, this was to come out of our budget somewhere, but we just don't have the revenue for it, am I right?
At the moment, yes, and, and the way it had been placed on the warrant initially was to raise and appropriate.
Right.
Now, you'll know that there are two other raise and appropriates on here, but they're roughly about $23,000, $24,000 if you add the two together.
Mm-hmm.
And we already had, and by the way, I'm discussing this with the finance director, we had about $17,000 excess levy capacity, and when you get up on, onto the final recap sheet, that could, that could be tweaked slightly to pick up the extra $3,000 to $5,000. A hundred, you know, raise and appropriate's probably not going to make it, and it could hold up your tax rate from being accepted. And, and at the moment, there, there are no other places we could go to get that from, and that's, that's where we are at the moment.
Okay. So, any thoughts on that? Do we wanna remove this for now, or do we leave it on and then skip over it? What do we, Carl, I'm interested in your perspective on this, being our finance committee, ex-committee member.
Again, I don't believe that it should be on here. I'm not sure, in some ways, I almost wanna see it left on here so that I can vote against it. But in this, in this situation, being consistent, you know, I guess the intent is to find the $100,000 either within the police department budget or within one of some of the other budgets. And once, if, if it's found within some of the other budgets, then this, this committee is gonna have to vote that transfer at the end of the year anyhow.
Yeah.
So, my feeling is that it doesn't need to be here, although I don't feel as strongly about it as I did the other one.
I feel like I'm not gonna be the only one no vote anymore, other Carl's up here.
All right, so-
Can I be heard briefly?
Say that again?
Can I be heard on this briefly?
Yes, yes.
So, this is a little bit different than the other one. I understand the other one was just an extra step that the previous town administrator was taking to make sure that there was an appropriation and a funding source, so that town meeting could vote on it as a new position. This one here's a little bit different. I realize the financial situation that we're in, and I asked, I would ask the board keep it on here in the event that a funding source of some sort becomes available. I'm not advocating that we transfer money from another department, because I don't wanna hurt other departments. What this is is half a year funding for a sergeant for the family services unit. We've talked about that before, but I just would like to add that the collateral responsibilities have deluged the current command staff over the last 10 years. I could list them if you want, but I, I can't give another collateral duty, either of these gentlemen here or any of the other six sergeants, because everybody's tapped out. So, that's the reason that we're trying to create a sergeant's position for the family services unit.
And my other comment is that I don't like having significant operating items on a fall town meeting. My other comment is that I don't like having significant operating items on a fall town meeting.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion, or no? I mean, we can either not take a motion and leave it on there.
I'll make a motion just to see where we stand. I move that Article Six to supplement the FY twenty-six operating budget for the police department in the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be transferred or somehow found a funding, find a funding source somewhere. Did I say to move it off?
To remove it from the special town meeting warrant?
Okay. Second.
All right, so all those in favor of removing this article from the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and those against, I'm a no.
I'm a no from removing it.
But it was three, Dawn, did you say aye? Okay, so that's three to two, so that's a remove.
So I need all, if I want to make sure I follow that right, it's going to be removed, correct? So I'll be back before you at some point, before the end of the calendar year. You may be shocked that I'll be back here talking, but I'll be looking at another funding source for that sergeant, whether it's within the operating budget or a grant or some other funding source.
Understood.
Thank you.
We have a permanency with your name on it over there, so.
I'm going to put your name on it.
Can we get it wider in a darker shade of blue?
All right, if there's no other changes, are there any other questions or changes? If not, then I'll take a motion to close the warrant.
Just double checking. Did Finance Committee end up editing their bylaw? Because they asked for a bylaw change.
And we did mention that.
So Finance Committee asked for their bylaw to be changed. Right now, it's, I know we don't have the language in front of us right now, so I apologize for that. I know they have struggled to have meetings. Part of the reason we don't have an article to look at right now is that they struggle to get a quorum. And let me just pull up their bylaw. So the bylaw as it's currently worded, I don't know if we can just run off the cuff like this or not, but we're going to just, we're just going to wing it. Finance Committee's bylaw right now says, they told, of course, it's going to take me a second to find it, Finance Committee. I believe it says shall have seven members, but they asked to change it to up to, or, let me see. Okay, there shall be seven members constituting the Finance Committee. They asked that that be changed to less. The problem we have is without language from them. I would have concerns because, well, actually, no, it's all moderator-appointed, so it's different. Like, capital planning is appointed by different people. This is all moderator-appointed. So I think they had talked about having a minimum of three, a maximum of seven. So I think that what they were asking for, and we didn't get this by legal counsel, but the request from Finance Committee was, could we change the bylaw to say there shall be between, between three and seven members constituting the Finance Committee? Or there shall be at least three and at most seven. So I don't know what the right language is for that, but that's what they asked about.
Yeah, but wouldn't it be better to say up to seven and not have a lower?
Well, then you can have one member, right? And that's not going to work. So you have to have a minimum number. At least three, so you have a quorum of two.
Yeah, I think you'd, and you probably want it to be an odd number so that you don't come up with a tie on it.
Well, we have some then, and ties are losses.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah.
So that, I guess that's the question is, I mean, you served on Finance Committee.
I personally would be opposed to having anything that would result in a Finance Committee of less than five people.
Okay.
Well, the, so the problem is, what that means is.
They have to have at least three to meet.
They have to have three to take an action, and if there are only three, they all have to be there to take an action.
But he's okay with that.
Yeah.
I mean, the issue I have right now is that we don't have their say, right? They wanted to change their bylaw, they didn't give it a say to any of the work with.
That's why I personally would not add it to this warrant.
That's fair. So unfortunately, I guess it didn't make the cut. It is what it is. They meet tomorrow night, and maybe they'll, they'll talk about it, and there's not much we can do, I guess. They didn't.
Okay.
But they have four members, and because their quorum is four.
Get two more coming.
Okay, Carl's been working on it. All right, well, then we won't worry about it. So I guess that was my only reservation with closing it, was that one article.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to close it?
I move the Board of Selectmen close the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we are going to vote on the articles and approve the clerk to post the warrant. So we have the articles in front of us.
You also have someone to present Article, what now is Six?
Yes, yes.
I don't know if you want to jump from her.
Keith, would you like to come up and talk about, is it, which article?
I think it's now number, oh, five, it's now number five. Yeah, I think so. Unless they unplugged it. It's going to change all the numbers, it's five, yeah.
So it's actually number seven?
It was seven, but now it's five.
Got it. Welcome, Mr. Emberg.
Hello?
And actually, thank you very much for hanging out and to talk to us about this.
Okay, would you like me to give you a summary of how we got to where we are?
Please.
Okay, the town's trackless machine is in a dilapidated condition and needs to be replaced. The prior superintendent of Streets, Trees and Parks seems looked at the estimated service life of the vehicle. It's a twelve to fifteen-year service life. It went on the capital plan to be replaced in its fifteenth year, which would have been this spring. Last year, the interim superintendent, Sean Turner, wanted to move that ahead by a year. Keith Hickey initially agreed with it. However, because of the financial conditions we were in at the time, it was one item that I think they could withhold for the time being to save the amount of money they needed to at that time. I think reluctantly, that was a gamble that we all took, and the interim superintendent's instinct was right. It's at year fourteen and a half, and it's fading quickly. I went to the Highway Barn to look at some new equipment and had a chance to see that, and it's, you know, I talked to the fire chief about it, I think he said it wasn't safe to be on the road. The machine consists of two parts which are pinned together. That pin is wearing down. The equipment is fit, that goes along with it's failing. The parts are enormously expensive, it seems, to replace. The machine does several functions for the town, and we don't really have a machine that substitutes those functions. It plows the sidewalks, it snowblows the sidewalks, it sweeps the sidewalks. It does heavy field mowing, which includes our slice of Bay Farm, Callista Farm, and the cap on the landfill, which if we don't mow, when the state DEP inspectors come out, they won't inspect the cap, they'll just find us for not having it ready for them. And they're going to want to come back out later. The mower right now won't kick on. The other thing it does is roadside brush clearing. The brush clear has what is probably simple to describe as an arm that holds the attachment out where the brush is on the side of the road. It's called a boom flail. We've been having to replace very expensive pins on that. The arm, which I saw for myself, is bending. They've had to modify a bracket to keep it from getting worse. It's not working, and the brush in some of the residential roads is growing in, causing these roads to narrow, causing drivers to drive closer to the center, and the fire chief is worried at some point we'll have a collision because of that. And he told me that two of his department's vehicles have been scraped up a bit by some of the brush. One of them actually had to be fixed because of it. The price is going up. If we don't order it now, it's going to go up by about fourteen and a half thousand dollars. Part of that is this boom flail that needs to be replaced. We'll have a tariff on it next year, which will be just part of that cost. The trade-in value will decrease if we wait till next year. Initially, we had an estimate that this year we would get thirty thousand dollars trade-in. Once the dealer found out that the tires, which are a special kind, it's called a dual tire, they're weighted specially to balance the machine when they're on these sidewalks in the winter, they all need to be replaced. And there's something I think is called a pro clutch within this, is it a pro clutch or a PTO clutch? Special kind of clutch that is a substantial cost to replace. There's other problems with it as well. Like I said, the pins, a lot of the mechanical functions of it. We don't need to necessarily, we're not going to purchase all of the attachments for it. Some of the ones we have are still in good shape, but we do need a new machine with some of the attachments replaced.
Do we have any questions? All right, do we want to vote on this one, or go back to the beginning and then move forward?
I don't have questions. I have no objections to replacing this machine either, and I like, I like the funding source of cleaning out all the old articles.
Right.
That's always a nice way of funding for things.
I like that part of it. I'm not crazy over the rest of the funding.
I know, I know.
All right.
Get creative when there's nothing left.
All right, Keith, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go back to Article One, and we'll just go through these one at a time. So this is a replacement of the Kingston Elementary School roof. We're working with MSBA right now. They've had to redo this submission a couple of times with MSBA, and we're waiting on their approval. But it's going to be one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, roughly. That was the total, right, George? And then, and then it's fifty-three percent? So the total for the project is one point, almost one point three million. I think MSBA's thing originally was fifty-three percent of it or something. So we would be on the hook and borrow for the other, the other half, the half of that.
Yes, usually with an MSBA loan, whatever the portion is, they, the law makes you borrow the whole amount so that if there are changes that they decide, well, we're not doing fifty-three percent, then you don't have to keep running back to a town meeting. So the treasurer is authorized for the whole thing, and then once the, it's all done and the project's completed, then you go back and deauthorize that portion that you didn't use.
And just to keep in mind, the whole roof needs to be repaired, but because of the age and MSBA rules, they've had to scale it back to a small part of the roof, so they're going to be coming back again for more in the future. This was just a section of it. So if there's no questions, would anyone like to make a motion on approving?
I move the Board of, I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article One, Partial Replacement of the Kingston Elementary School Roof.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Number two, Supplemental Operating Budget Planning.
Are we, are we going to pick who, I know we're not doing this.
Well, School Committee is.
So you go with that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
This is School Committee, yep.
Yeah, so the first one is School Committee, and I think Dawn was volunteering for Article Two.
That's what it sounded like, that's what I heard.
Nope.
So, um, so this is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twelve thousand eight hundred to be expended to free town charges for FY twenty-six and authorize town accountant to allocate said sums to the appropriate budgets or take any other action thereto. Planning wages, twelve thousand eight hundred. Does anybody have questions about this?
This was, this was something that we struggled to eliminate, I think, out of the budget, and there was an attempt at town meeting to move this back into the budget that failed. So I don't, I don't think there's, it's going to be a surprise to people that this is a need.
Right.
So, it's just.
No, go ahead.
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article Two Supplement, Supplement FY twenty-six Operating Budget Planning.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
My comment after voting for it, I find it a bit troubling that we can't find thirteen thousand dollars in a sixty million dollar budget without having to go to town meeting for it. Next.
All right, Article Three.
Like on the other one, you said School Committee, who's doing?
Dawn.
Good question.
I guess Dawn.
It's Dawn.
I'll vote for Dawn.
Dawn's going to present it, yep.
Can't screw that up.
Then I'm not voting for myself for anything.
The next item is for Board of Assessors, but it's FY twenty-six budget assessing. Raise and appropriate a hundred thousand dollars.
Keep going, and then we'll.
Well, I'm not going to read the whole thing. Go ahead.
No. First of all, there was a minor change in that, let me, let me say this. This is a very standard-type article. It's probably been done in virtually every town that I have. There's what is known as an intermediate revale that the assessors do before they hit that third or fourth year for their full revale. What ends up happening is they take money from the overlay, which is under the purview of the assessors. They put it out as an article, and then they do portions of the revale over the three-year period until you get to the big one at the end. The only thing that was just brought up to me by the Finance Director was, we want this to just, it's something that goes for three years, so you want to be able to carry it forward for three years. And you just said you want to, what was the wording change you wanted to do on there?
Yeah, the description says Article Supplement the Town's Operating Budget, and that's not the intention.
It's an article, it's a.
It's going to be a capital article that will carry forward.
It's, it's an article, a standalone article all by itself. Sorry.
So just the first, so essentially striking the first line of that description, is that what we're doing? Okay.
Yeah.
What's the balance in the overlay account before the hundred thousand dollars?
It's, um, just, it's like a million, one sixty-five.
The overlay account has over a million dollars in it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Does that mean you're going to vote no?
Just to clarify, for technical purposes, it's actually going to come from the overlay surplus account. So the Board of Assessors is going to vote.
Oh, you're going to turn your microphone on.
The Board of Assessors will vote a hundred thousand out of overlay to overlay surplus, so that's the proper funding source.
Oh, so they haven't voted this hundred thousand yet?
No, I think they have a meeting next week to do it. Yeah, Maureen is here as well, so she can probably speak more to that. But just for that, we just wanted to clarify a couple of points in just the description.
So the Board of Assessors will vote on to release the overlay in two weeks at their meeting to overlay surplus.
Okay.
If anyone has any questions, I can answer them.
And you have every indication that they intend to do that?
Yes. They intend to do that.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article Three, Supplement FY twenty-six Operating Budget Assessing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
And the assessors are doing this one?
And then Article Four, Supplemental Twenty-Four Operating Budget Veterans. It's thirteen thousand dollars to be expended to help fund the Veterans Department. But we are looking at, because we're creating this.
We'll get some reimbursement from Duxbury for it.
We will get reimbursement from Duxbury, and we're going to save some money later in the year.
I want to present this one. I want to present saving money.
So.
It's saving money, and yet we have to approve another thirteen thousand dollars.
But we're going to get more back, so it's spending money to make money.
Two steps forward, one step back, once it's approved by the state.
So Kim, did you want to make a motion to approve?
Let them make their, it's easier for the minutes where it's the same person making the motion, the same person second.
All right, Dawn, you're up. Just make the motion.
You shouldn't have started, it was your fault.
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article Four, Supplement FY twenty-six Operating Budget Veterans.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I will do that.
All right, the new Article Five, Capital Equipment Project Funding, this is what we just talked about, the new trackless mowing sidewalk tractor.
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article Five, Capital Purchase, Roadside Mower Sidewalk Plow.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the new Article Six, Establish a Board of Police Revolving Fund. Chief, do you want to talk about that, or George, does either one of you guys? It's basically seeing if the town will vote to amend Chapter Four, Article Twenty, Section Four, Twenty-five, four dash twenty dash five of the general bylaws. Chapter Twenty, Article Three, Section Ten of the newly codified bylaws to establish the following revolving fund for the police department. So it's for the police department, stolen, lost, abandoned or taken property proceeds. Chief of Police would be the authority to spend the funds. Use of funds would provide proceeds of sold property to lawful owner and other proceeds to general fund. And it would begin, the fiscal year would be twenty-seven and subsequent years.
So this is a different revolving? So this is a different revolving, because we have a revolving account, but that's, okay.
Yeah, so this is.
Sorry, I didn't see you moving that way.
Again, my service is primarily tech. This kind of falls under the evidence function, something that I supervise for the department. Effectively, this is a technicality from the way that I.
Oh, your microphone's out.
Microw needs to be turned on.
Okay, one more time.
You have to actually start walking again.
Yeah, yeah, reenact. Lieutenant for Police Department, Mike Scavera, this is really like what I consider a technicality relative to our evidence function. The intent here is to properly dispose of certain things through auction and money that comes to the department. We just need a place to put that. Best practice through our training is that there's an account we have control over to be able to move this money and do things, rather than having physical cash in the evidence room. That's really what it boils down to. It's, it's just gives an avenue to dispose of things, and if there are things that we auction that, that the, the town has rights over as far as the proceeds of that auction, it goes to the general fund. This isn't something that would fund the police department at all, it's just a, a manner in which for us to dispose of property.
Makes money.
I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article Six, establish a police revolving fund, abandoned or taken property.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And who wants to do this?
I reluctantly, because I'm not a big fan of revolving funds, and we seem to be adding them more and more.
But as, as the presenter, it's your job to sell it.
Sell it.
To tell me to.
And you voted for it. We can, we can cut his mic if we need to.
Give him the cane.
All right. Article number seven is a supplemental wastewater enterprise fund, the new Article Seven. Any questions, comments, motions?
I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article Seven, supplement FY twenty-six, operating budget wastewater.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hold on.
Aye.
We're adding positions in the middle of the year? That's what we're doing here? Okay. Sorry.
Nope, it's okay.
No.
Okay, so we had a, do we have four ayes and one against? All right, next item. Number eight, amend the hawkers, peddlers, and transient vendors bylaw. See if the town will vote to amend Chapter Two Thirty-One of the general bylaws titled "Peddling and Soliciting by Adding a No Solicitation Registry." We talked about that. Dawn, you talked about.
I have a question before we do this. With talking about the constraints of the police department and adding the background checks the department has, we're not asking for a whole lot of work as of creating this list, correct? It's just if someone asks for it, they hand them a copy of the list that.
Yep. Well, and supposedly they can just, you can, you basically register your address and the, and they just have a list of that.
I just want to be very careful and cognizant of adding things and resisting adding people, so I'm just trying to balance that.
Yes, our only request relative to this was that the police department would not be expected to maintain that list, to add to that list, take away from that list. If it can be done through an online portal, fine. The solicitor permitting process already is something we do. We already have documentation that's handed back and forth relative to that, so if this list could just be printed and handed to them, no big deal.
Yeah, and my understanding is you essentially go through with that when people come in and request it, yeah.
Exactly.
Or when the solicitor comes in and.
And I do know, I don't know if it came out in the final paperwork here, but I do know during this initial conversation, it was talks of upping the amount for solicitors' permit request, that application fee.
Yeah, I don't know if we ever had discussions on that. I mean, I'm completely for having it at whatever the max is allowed, because it's a solicitor.
I didn't see it.
I think right now it's three hundred dollars for each offense based in this document.
Just to clarify, the offenses are one thing, but the application fee currently is fifty dollars to apply, and then fifteen dollars for the actual ID that we hand out, so it's a total of sixty-five dollars that is give, that is charged to an applicant. So when they apply, we could keep it that, or during this process, you could up it to another reasonable amount, make it one fee instead of two separate fees that just complicates things, whatever you guys deem appropriate.
Sorry, is that fee listed?
It's listed in the bylaw. It's kind of split up and, and convoluted, but it's fifty bucks to apply and then fifteen dollars to get the actual ID.
Yep.
So if we want to change that, we need to change it in the bylaw.
I mean, I, I'm fine with whatever's, I mean, we think is easiest. I'm not necessar, I don't have a problem, I don't necessarily think we should raise fees to get the license, I think we should raise fees to go against abusers of the issue. That's, that's kind of my.
But are you suggesting, are you suggesting we take and make it one fee to make it less?
I, I would say it's cumbersome, the way it's written right now, so I can't technically tell an applicant, "You must give me sixty-five dollars upfront, you need to give me fifty dollars now, and then a separate check fifteen dollars later." It's cumbersome. The only difference would be technically if somebody applied right now under fifty dollars and then we denied them because of some disqualifier, they would not owe that separate fifteen dollars, where we could put that all together and say sixty-five dollars, and if they get denied, they get denied.
I'd say, I'd say put it all together at sixty-five and call it a day.
But I don't know, what does that do to tweaking this?
Where is that, though? We got to figure that, the language of it.
Because we need to reopen it.
To change.
No, you don't have to reopen it to make modifications to it.
You could do that with a motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Within that motion.
Mm-hmm. Because you're not adding an article.
I won't do this motion, I'll just do this one.
Editing an article.
You've been doing such a good job.
I've been doing way too many motions.
Oh.
Well, I got the motion at the beginning, at the special town meeting.
Right.
If they read it, they can correct it there.
Who, who's doing this one? Dawn, I feel like this should be you.
Well, I feel like.
This is your thing.
What George is saying is you don't have to make that recommendation, change.
Yeah, no, I get it. Yeah, I'm fine doing the motion, I just.
All right. Do you also want to make the motion to approve it?
What do I have to modify?
So I'm trying to find.
If anyone knows what I have to modify, they should do it, and I will happily say second.
Hold on, we'll find it. Carl already told us he's voting no on this, the first time he talked about it.
Too many Christmas, why can't we see it?
I know, it's.
What was it? Oh.
Article Two, stairs operation. Um, no person. Without first obtaining a license to do so from the board of selectmen upon paying of a license fee. So it doesn't sound like the dollar amount is listed in the bylaw, it sounds like a policy of fifty dollars based on that language, but you want it?
The bylaws on the website list a fee.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah, it's not in here.
I mean, maybe we can address it at a different time, but even if it's a floor motion at town meeting.
Yeah, that might be what we need to do.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, do you want to make the?
I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article, now, hold on a second. Article number eight, amend peddling and hawking bylaw, establish a no solicitation registry.
And adjust fees. Do we want to add that or no? Okay. But Dawn sounds fine.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Opposed.
All right, four to one. All right, Article Nine, change town clerk position from elected to appointed. So we had discussed this before, Keith brought it before us. At the time, Paul supported it, our town clerk. Right, our town clerk. So any questions, comments, or you want to make a motion to approve? And I'm happy to take this one.
So Paul's going to have a, a vote for now, and we tie it?
It's a, it's a good question. So when we change positions from, as a, as a community, as when we change positions from elected to appointed, the elected person finishes their term. The reason this is coming before special town meeting is the timing.
Right.
So the current town clerk's term expires this spring, so asking town meeting if they would like to change to appointed, the timing makes sense to ask now, otherwise we would wait for an annual town meeting. If that is the direction the town wants to move, it would go into place after the, at the spring election.
Right.
Or July first, I'm not sure the timing of that, but after the spring town election. If not, then there's just another election and the town clerk proceeds as an elected position.
Did you want to make the?
I can't wait. I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article Nine, special legislation to change from elected to appointed town clerk.
Second.
Is it special legislation? Is it?
Probably.
It doesn't say that.
I am reading the words provided to me.
Oh.
The article itself says change town clerk position from elected to appointed.
Okay, all right. Did we have a second?
Yep, I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm happy to read this one. Is there a against?
There you go.
Opposed.
Four one. I don't give them the opportunity to oppose.
I think if you don't ask more, he's still going to tell you.
I guess it's four oh, he didn't accept your opposed.
All right, and I, and I'm happy to present this one. Article Ten, the capital equipment project funding.
Well, one, one minor thing, yeah, I cut and paste Number Seven to create this.
Yeah.
So you notice it says capital at the top, the finance director just pointed out, this was not a capital.
Got it.
But I just copied it down and didn't change it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so it wasn't a capital thing, so we'll, we'll take that out.
It's not a capital planning committee.
No.
But it is, it is capital equipment?
Well, if, I, I guess you would call it, but it's, it's over fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, what are we, project funding, is that what we usually call that? This year, twenty-six, project funding?
Yeah, well, project, yeah.
To repair him on capital.
Oh, he left.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's really to supplement the operating budget.
Okay.
So he can buy the.
So you can repair the end.
Right.
It's really, I mean, it's a transfer of funds from the waterways fund.
To two, I just, when I did the, the cut and paste, I took the other.
I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article Ten, harbor master boat engine repair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? All right.
Who's going to present that one?
Dawn.
Uh, one of us.
I will do that.
Okay.
Missy, missy, do you even have one?
I didn't, so I just.
No, I mean, I mean, oh, yeah, you do, you do.
Yeah, I did one, I did the veterans one.
She has number four.
Yep. All right.
I'm the only sucker with two.
Well, you're up for reelection. Good to get your name recognition.
So are you, you should actually take, if you want to take two.
All right.
Does the, sorry, did the waterways, the, the waterways people don't need to vote on that, right? The harbor master boat, they don't typically, do they?
No.
I don't know, because there's a whole, there's the waterways committee, so I wasn't sure if they typically advise on waterways stuff.
Will they be resounding?
I don't think it's required, I just was curious. Okay.
It's a good question.
If they didn't vote on it, they didn't vote on it, but I know that they advise us on the harbor, and they work with the harbor masters, so I wasn't sure if they voted on this. I know it's been, it was a last minute thing, so they might not have had time.
I think, I think you're probably, you're all right with the town meeting.
Yeah, and they can always vote, too, and we can always tell town meeting after.
All right, next up, we're reviewing possible approval of financial assistance application.
We need to.
Close this one.
Close, and we also need to move to authorize the town clerk.
Hold on, we don't have to close.
I think we do have to, we didn't close the town meeting, did we?
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't. We, we pushed it to close it.
She's saying we did. She's saying we did.
We closed.
Okay, we did. If they said we did, we did.
We closed it, right?
Yeah, whatever.
Cool.
I thought it was two, and then I just read it anyways.
But we do need to make a motion to.
I move the board of selectmen authorize the town clerk to post the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, special town meeting warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're done with that.
And then, next item is to review a possible approval of financial assistance application.
So we have a resident that submitted a financial assistance application asking for help with their mortgage. Jennifer Stires, who is our outreach coordinator, reviewed the paperwork and provided feedback that is within the board materials. The requested amount is eight thousand dollars. As of August thirty-first, the expendable balance of the Thomas Prince Fund is eighty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, so this is a, yeah.
So typically in the past, when we're considering financial aid applications, we've looked at whether or not this is going to help them, and they'll have future resources that can make the difference. It's not something that, we don't typically provide financial aid if it's not going to be a one-time thing.
My understanding, Trish, I think you, you know some thing about the, about like the refinance, the mortgage. So this payment will allow this person to be able to refinance their mortgage. I'm not saying anything wrong, right?
Potentially change their situation.
Right. This is a, a next step. Yeah, to resolve the outstanding payments, exactly, that's what it is.
Yep, I just wanted to make it clear for, for folks, it's, it's a challenging time, I understand.
All right, are there any questions, comments, concerns, motions?
It looks like the outreach coordinator's recommending it, so.
She is, yeah.
I can make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm in discussion. I move the board of selectmen approve the financial assistance application submitted in the amount of eight thousand from the Thomas Prince Benevolent Fund.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? All right, so that's unanimous. All right, there's no update on DPW, meeting minutes.
Still working on the MOU. Okay.
Yeah, that, that's going.
I understand. We have a lot going on, and town meeting is coming.
Okay, so meeting minutes, all outstanding minutes will be on our eleven twenty-one agenda. Town administrator report, George, is there anything you have to?
Well, I remember, most of the week has been devoted to just what we did, so I mean, that's kind of my update for this evening or whatever, and there's nothing really to, I mean, there's things going on, but nothing to bring up at the moment.
Okay. Do we have any selectmen comments?
Just that the regionalization committee voted in favor to move forward with the proposal from the Collins Center.
Great.
And there are a few things that we, that they had asked of us. They were going to put a proposal forward, and then because, at the time, Keith had volunteered to be the signer of that, that once I get that proposal, I'll bring it forward and have you check it out, George. That's it, wants the update on that.
All right, our next regular meeting is October twenty-first. The week after, we have our big meeting, our town, our special town meeting. All right, with that, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Seven fifty-three PM.
Carl, that was the longest, I have the whole meeting.
Most disappointed, huh?